Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight's a special meeting as we have the reorganization of the Board of Education. It is my opportunity to chair the meeting until we have the election of the new officers of the Board. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and declare we have a quorum present. And our students haven't shown up yet for the pledge. If they come here in a few minutes, we'll invite them up a little bit later to hear from them. If they don't, we'll invite them back another time. But if everyone would rise for the pledge of allegiance at this time, an amendment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll call for approval of the agenda.
Yes, Superintendent, I would move to approve, make a motion to approve the closed session minutes dated.
Agenda.
Oh, agenda, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. I'm heads over there.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
A second? Okay, moved in second by Mr. Stafford. Is there any discussion? Mr. Reddner?
Yes. Dr. Michael, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include under new business, discussion of the WCPS WBOE involvement in the On Track program, which is moving forward again this year. It's a partnership-type program, and I also would like to offer that we contribute financial assistance and other direct or indirect assistance to that program. The On Track program is a coalition of independent community partners focused on improving the educational attainment levels of Washington County residents and students in order to strengthen the local economy and improve our community's quality of life. A variety of educational, business, philanthropic, and civic leaders began meeting a couple of years ago together. They've been working to create, and I think that this is the key statement, a cradle-to-career support system. There are some outstanding partners included in this organization. Among them, AT&amp;T, which has given significant financial support, Citigroup, Weis, Sephora, United Way of Washington County, the Hagerstown Rotary Foundation, the Greater Hagerstown Committee, and others. Dr. Michael has mentioned before that this is a group that advocates for Washington County public schools and education, and a group that supports strongly our pre-K initiative. It also, our diversity committee, and I think probably Mike mentioned this this evening, supports the partnership with this group. So it's my hope that we can have some conversation about that. So I make this motion with that in mind.
Is there a second to the amendment?
A second.
Okay, it's been first and second to amend the agenda. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? All those discussion, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm unclear on the motion, what it is the agenda item is going to be and where it's falling on the agenda.
The business because, you know, including in that the potential of a financial amount, you know, financial.
Okay, so the item.
So the first part of it, and I'll read it again for Ms. Chekovik. I apologize because I started talking about it before I finished with the agenda, the amendment.
Right, right now, we're just trying to get to the term of the agenda item.
Okay, this would be, I move to amend the agenda to include under new business, a discussion of WCPS BOE involvement in the On Track Washington County partnership with the goal of contributing financial assistance and other direct or indirect assistance to that group.
Okay, was that a first and second? Any other discussion on the amendment?
I think this is a discussion that we ought to have, but I don't think tonight is the night for it. Most of us sitting here, this is the first we've heard this, although I did email the gentleman to find out how he was going to amend the agenda and so forth. And if we're going to make a monetary contribution, I think we should wait until we see what our budget's going to be and so forth until we get that. I am aware of their partnership and how they, their goals and everything, but I think this is a agenda item that needs to be put off till another time, until we have some more time to think about it.
Any discussion on the amendment to the agenda?
I would like to speak to, would stand said about On Track. It is a great organization. It's a non, with nonprofit resources and opportunities to create a career. It has a lot of merits, and, but I think it's going to need more discussion than what we could give it here tonight. And so I would also like to not speak to it tonight, but another time when we have more time and can talk about it in depth.
Okay, if we could vote on the amendment to the agenda, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your right hand. One, two, three. Student concurs. Motion fails. So back to the main motion of approval of the agenda. Is there any other amendments to the approval of the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda as written, please raise your right hand. Okay, seven zero and student concurs. Now, approval of the minutes?
It's your turn. I've been waiting all day for this. Superintendent Michaels, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, November the 21st, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second.
Plus, all those in favor of the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the minutes? Are you in favor of the minutes? Not voting tonight?
I understand.
Okay, six, six zero on the minutes. Mr. Gassford.
Yes.
And I'd like to make another motion for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, November the 21st, 2017.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendments on the agenda? Excuse me, on the minutes? All those in favor of the approval of the minutes? Okay, again, six, an abstention, and the student concurs.
Five, five, oh, my abstention.
That wasn't in attendance.
Six, okay. Okay. At this point, we're doing special board action. We're seeking nominations for the president of the Board for the upcoming term. It'll start this evening, actually, with approval of the Board. So at this time, I've opened the floor to nominations for president of the Board.
I move for Melissa Williams to be continuing as the president.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are there additional nominations? On the president, for Melissa Williams as president of the Board for the upcoming year, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, seven zero and student concurs. Open the nominations for vice president of the Board.
I nominate Dan Stafford for vice president of the Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there other nominations? Okay, and for Mr. Stafford as vice president of the Board, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven oh and the student concurs. So at this point, I'll turn the motion, or the floor back over to Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Next item, excuse me, on tonight's agenda is public comment. And we have one individual, Mr. Neil Becker, signed up to speak. Mr. Becker?
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Recent news in Maryland and in the nation has caught the attention of educators across the country. My first topic is, Dr. Michael mentioned that layoffs could be possible to, or in the system, to offset some budget shortfalls. The few minutes we have allotted here for public comment, definitely not enough time to address this issue in full because it involves the funding agents outside of Washington County Public Schools, in the state and in the county level. I'll be blunt, though, this evening. Our schools and our students cannot afford layoffs. Studies show that increasing class sizes dramatically reduces achievement, and that's contrary to what we're doing. We're working to improve and increase achievement. I'll continue addressing the topic with the commissioners and the Kerwin Commission and the delegation, as the Board did today with the delegation, and as Dr. Michael did in September with the Kerwin Commission. I'll continue, and I know our members in the teacher and educator ranks will continue to reach out to our funding agents to advocate for our school system, but our students cannot afford layoffs. School staffing is my second topic, especially staffing that has to do with pending teacher shortage and challenging retention rate for teachers. At the start of the year, we heard about an opportunity. Joni shared some, Joni Burkhart, shared some information about some funding she was able to achieve or apply for regarding first-year teachers and the ability to provide them with additional coaching and planning time to assist them as they started their career. Studies show that approximately 20% of educators leave the career within their first five years. A quick review of the staff changes that are posted on the Board's website show approximately 18 teachers, educators have resigned this year. Washington County Public Schools cannot afford to lose 20% of its teachers as the state and the nation suffer through this potential teacher shortage. It goes hand in hand with what we're talking about with potential layoffs. Our students will suffer if we continue to lose teachers and if we're forced to lay off educators, parapros, support staff, to balance a budget. I'm on record here and now to say that WCTA will partner with WCPS, with the Board of Education, to recruit and to retain teachers. Teacher candidates are being recruited by larger counties with larger salaries and deeper pockets. Washington County must continue to think creatively to compete with those counties. How can we promote WCPS? How can we support new teachers? What can we take off teachers' plates? How can we find more planning time for teachers? How can WCTA play a role in recruiting and retaining teachers? We've been ready to join forces for years. Now's the time for action, and we're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the Board this evening? Are there any Board members that would like to respond to public comment? Mrs. Fisher?
Just to one point that Mr. Becker was making about, I think he said 18 is what he counted, excuse me, of resignations. Not all those 18 were leaving education. Some went to other counties for higher positions in education or jobs back to home, wherever home happened to be because something opened up there. So they're not all leaving education, though some do. Thank you, anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. We'll move on to old business. Excuse me, our first item under old business is the consideration of the revision to the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Program Plan. Mr. Prue, Mr. Rollins.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board. You may recall several months ago, a few months ago, we presented this year's capital improvement plan, the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Plan, for your approval to send down to the Maryland State Department of Education for funding in FY 2019. We are here today to recommend and seek your approval for revision to the CIP plan to add a funding allocation for an additional floor on the Board of Education component of the urban improvement project. With that, we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for approval of the revision, the FY 2019 CIP plan to include $2,896,000 in additional funding requests for the urban educational campus BOE component to accommodate a fifth floor on that building.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Reddner. Discussion or questions with Mr. Prue and Mr. Rollins?
What will our cost be of the school? Need to be the four million only?
Yes.
This is a funding request that we will be making, correct?
Correct.
So it's no additional money over the four million that we've voted on before?
That's correct.
Do we have assurances from the state that, can we talk a little bit about that process?
So Thursday, the three of us will be attending an IAC meeting where we'll be reaching interagency.
Committee on School Construction.
School Construction, sorry. We'll be appealing our first round of funding. In our first round of funding, we did receive 3.5 million for Sharp Spurg, I believe, is that correct? The UIP project, excuse me, is still waiting what's called a clearinghouse approval, and the IAC is to take that action on Thursday. We don't know if they'll take that action before we appeal or after we appeal, but all the information's been submitted. We fully anticipate that they'll do that approval. They also said at the end of the meeting, they anticipate making 75% of the allocations of the governors, or what they anticipate the governor's CIP budget being, capital improvement program budget being. So we'll know a lot on Thursday. We'd anticipate we've received some or all of our requests for the UIP. We have a number of years of eligibility to continue to ask for the UIP money. We are eligible based on our student enrollment, and we do anticipate getting full funding over a series of years.
So this is money the state has set aside for, basically, I've seen some feedback from people thinking this is taking away from programs. It's not going to cost us any additional money and take any dollars away from programs that already exist.
It's not part of the general fund in any way. It's the capital fund.
Got it. It's the state money for.
Capital budget.
Got it.
Mr. Gassford?
You know, originally, when this was brought forth about two years ago, maybe, it may be more than that. You know, this was supposed to be a project to unite different partners. And that was the only reason I jumped on it, because I thought, you know, what a nice boost to the downtown, but to have a lot of equity from different people. And, you know, I know funding is there, according to, you know, the governor coming up and making his presentation. And I know that Senator Sarafini has really worked very hard on this project, but I think it's a shame that we are in the 12th hour and we have to change everything at the last minute. Now, I'm not saying it's not a good thing. I just wish that we'd have honored what we originally started out with because that would have brought more people to the table. And I think the downtown needs more than just one or two individual projects to make it happen. I know everyone's going to say that we're still, we're going to do our thing, but it also makes it easier for them to walk away because this is a standalone project. And I will support it, but, you know, I'm just very disappointed, and I hope, I hope that we don't have any problems from here on out because I know a lot of people have a lot of time and money into this. And I just wish that, I wish the best for the downtown Hagerstown, and I wish that we would have had more partnerships with the University of Maryland, the Maryland Theater, the downtown, the county commissioners, the business people that were all, you know, for this project, because, I mean, it would have really made a difference. I'm not so sure if we can get everyone still to the table again. I mean, we'll be there at the table. We'll put our building up. We'll do what we have to do. We'll be great educators. We'll do our job. We'll continue to do that. But, you know, this was a project that was going to enhance a lot of the downtown, and I'm really sorry to see that that's not going to happen. And, you know, maybe it will, but we've seen this before, you know, all these great things happen, and then it all kind of fizzles out. So I'm kind of embarrassed that we have to come and make this last-minute change, but I'm sure we'll do our job as educators. We'll do our best we can, and, you know, I'm sure our staff will do everything they can to make this happen as quickly as possible. I think there's going to be a delay now, or there's another delay. You know, I know the Bowman Project has been, you know, held up, held up, held up, but it's just, I think it's kind of a sad day and kind of a good day for us, I guess, so. But I will support it.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have to disagree with Mr. Gassford on several points. First of all, this initially was just a project of the school system. We were going to build a five-story addition to Bisva and had gone to the commissioners to ask them if they would participate in a CIP plan, and they refused. Later, they came to us after they had talked to other groups in downtown with a new plan, which would tie the Maryland Theater to Bisva, which would accommodate some changes that the University of Maryland Downtown wanted to make, which also would have required us to give up some classrooms that we were renting in that building. Then some private individuals got involved and purchased a facility downtown and pitched a proposal to University of Maryland to help them expand the programs they wanted to expand by utilizing part of the building that they wanted. And the commissioners then came to the school board and said, how about if we still go, if you still want to go ahead with the Bisva project, we'll do it, but we'll tie it in with these other projects, at which point we agreed, but then the commissioners lowered it to four floors instead of five. And so in order to accomplish the goals that we had when we first asked to build the hub, which was to provide labs and a cafeteria for our students at Bisva, to expand the space so that we could offer that opportunity for more students, and also to connect the building to the Maryland Theater, which would be a benefit to both the Maryland Theater and our Bisva students. We also did not want our students to continue to have to leave the building several times a day to go to classes in other buildings. So the commissioners, we talked about it, we decided there would be a bridge built to link the Bisva new facility to the building that the private entity was renovating, and we would then sublease rooms from that building from the Maryland Theater, or not the Maryland Theater, excuse me, the University of Maryland. So this was never initially a project of different entities in the community. This for the school system was originally a project just for us, and then it became a unified project in downtown. We will still be connected to the Maryland Theater. It would not be necessary, if this goes through, to build a bridge, which many of the partners were seeing as a real problem. The university system is still going to go ahead with their programs. The private entities are still developing their building. And I didn't mention before, the court behind the theater and Bisva, as far as I know, is still to be established. There just won't be a bridge over part of it. So I don't think there's been a, this causes a significant change. I think it is a plus for the school system because it takes us back to our original plans for Bisva and eliminates us paying out money to several other facilities for rooms for teaching and keeps our kids within that building. They won't have to be traveling outside and improves their education because there are now labs, or there will be labs available, and a cafeteria. So I don't see where, it's a bad thing. I don't think it's something to be said over. I'm really happy in the long run for what's happened. I know it's going to delay it a little more, but I think in the end, it's going to be better than what we were just recently, previously, working on.
Mr. Stafford?
Having attended many of these seven o'clock meetings about the urban improvement project, I was somewhat surprised, but not really surprised, if that makes sense, that a change was brought about because the last meeting on November 27th was totally dedicated to architectural plans for the plaza, which doesn't concern really our project, but the bridge part did concern our project. And it was pretty obvious, I think, after But the bridge part did concern our project. And it was pretty obvious, I think, after to a lot of people attending that meeting after that, that something was gonna come out of it, because there has been a lot of speculation whether the bridge would be open or closed and so forth. There was discussion about maneuvering trucks back into there and where the first pier would be. There was discussion about truck drivers having to move alcohol decorations, I forget what they're called. Okay, twenty-pound things to get their trucks in and then replacing them. And I'm sitting there thinking, no, this can't be, and so forth. So I had some questions, and quite frankly, I asked Senator Sarafini about them today at the delegation meeting. And I said, I'm gonna assume, and I think I can disclose this, I said, I'm gonna assume that you've lined all your ducks up for this change to take place with the IAC and everything else. And every question that I asked, he answered. And there's no doubt in my mind that he's been in touch with the Paris to Be in Annapolis and everything to make this change come about. I just hope that from now on, after this project that the school board doesn't get involved in land development, because I don't think that's our job. But I can see where this is a boon to us, because as Mrs. Fisher has said, we're not gonna be paying rent to USM, or the University Systems of Maryland, and so forth. It takes away the discussion about the bridge. The bridge costs were getting what I call excessive. I heard at the beginning anywhere from six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. What, the last figure was almost two million dollars or something like that? And, you know, that's two million dollars for a bridge that people are gonna walk across? So, you know, if that money can be utilized to put another floor on, which I say go for it.
Yeah, just very quickly, you know how tickled I am about this. I mean, it is interesting. Twelve years ago, Dr. Morgan was here, and I just had come on the board, and Boyd remembers vividly, because he was in your chair. We were on the cusp of spending a hundred million dollars probably for land, just to build a high school. We were in desperate need of a high school. Jackie remembers, obviously. And the land prices were so exorbitant, we couldn't even, you know, we couldn't get a sniff, let alone build it. So we were in a pickle, so to speak. And Dr. Morgan had talked about this project over and over and over again, and finally, it came to fruition. And Dr. Michael, and you guys, and everybody else that was involved, you know, it worked out, in spite of some holes. You know, we didn't have a cafeteria. We didn't have all the classroom space we needed, and so on and so forth. But one thing it did was, one of the things that we said it would do, it put off our need for a comprehensive high school for, we said, ten years. Well, it's been that, it's been ten years. It did what we said it would do in that respect. We knew we were gonna need classroom space at some time. You know, this project, three years ago, we wanted to do it independently. We were ready to do it. We had some money set aside. We were hoping the county would help us, and we'd use other private funding like we had before. So it's happening because it was necessary. We need this now. We are starting to fill high schools again. This could open up three hundred seats. So I'm tickled that it's moving. I think, you know, anybody that, outside of this room, who would be foolish enough to kill this, the wrath of the state government will be piled on Washington County for years to come. We've got a governor that's committed over five million dollars. We've got a state senator that has put a lot of political capital. We have somebody who's now a judge, who was a state delegate, who put up a lot of political capital and worked, you know, and worked the room extremely well. So I'm glad we're moving forward. I think, you know, this tickles me that we're gonna have the fifth floor, if everything goes right, because I think it's in our best interest. So get to work, guys. Let's get, start knocking down walls and moving forward. It's time to get this thing built. It's three years late, but let's go. So congratulations. Congratulations, Dr. Michael, and all the rest of you that have supported it along the way. I'm off my ban, Bob.
If I might just add, we are, excuse me, I got to a little something here in my thread, baby. We are continuing our partnership with the Maryland Theater. We are gonna be connected to the Maryland Theater in several ways. We're gonna continue our partnership of sharing space with them. Also, they're gonna have the opportunity to use our dock space, which will much improve. They're receiving various shows and things. Also, work with them on something as simple as trash removal, which is quite a challenge, especially when they add the front of their building. And they're also gonna continue to provide us rehearsal space for our students that are in the Maryland Theater regularly. I did also talk to Mark Halsey, the director, executive director of University of Maryland. Offered him the opportunity to think about how science might be used for university students in our new building, and maybe opportunities for partnerships of how that might work out for our students also to earn credit from University of Maryland. So we're gonna continue to explore a variety of partnerships downtown, work the city on the potential of the plaza, other things like that. So much of the partnership, I think, will still continue. It'll just be in a different fashion. I do believe, as some of the other people said, I see many advantages to our five-story building, short-term and long-term.
So the vote is on the approval of the revision to the FY 2019 CIP plan to include two million eight-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars in additional funding requests for the urban educational campus, the BOE component, to accommodate a fifth floor on the building. All those in favor? Seven to zero. Student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen. That's all of the old business we have this evening. We'll move on to new business. First item is the consent agenda.
Not quite.
Rushing the room.
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have five items for your review. The Purchasing Review Committee did review these items on November third and recommends approval. And staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakedal. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for hardwood mulch to the Mulch Man, per the unit prices listed. VMware firewall to CDWG at a total cost of two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty dollars. The purchase of a 2008 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 HD truck from National Auto Fleet Group at a total cost of twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents. And Palo Alto support to Skyline Technology Solutions at a total cost of one-hundred-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. And Aperture Cloud Security Software to Skyline Technology Solutions at a total cost of sixty-three-thousand-four-hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Bakedal? Mr. Stauffer?
I was just curious, because the last meeting, we had withdrawn a proposal to purchase a Silverado truck from a commercial dealer through another bid process. I was just wondering how we came across this, because this is several thousand dollars less than the last one.
Correct. Yeah, we reevaluated that bid. We, when we got, we got quotes from both. And the initial evaluation, we did not think that the bid, or the quote from the fleet group, the company we're purchasing from, wasn't equivalent. We thought it was just the chassis. We didn't think it had all of the options that we had gotten quoted from the Montgomery County government bid. And when we looked at the price, didn't think it was an equivalent, plus it had a ten-week lead time. And the other, the Montgomery County quote was an awful lot vehicles, so it was available immediately. After reevaluating that, we did determine that it was the exact, not the exact same, but a very similar model, the exact same model truck with very similar options, six thousand dollars left, less in price, we determined that it was worth the additional lead time.
Why do you think this bid's so much less? I mean, what's, what made it so much less?
It's a national organization. So the Montgomery County is just a local bid. This is, NJPA is a cross-the-country bid that, you know, was done and gets this really aggressive pricing. Plus, it's ordered, it's not off the lot, too. And I think that they're able to sell only what they build at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
That is on Mr. Bickford's motion.
I have one question.
Okay.
About the mulch. That's, that's a lot of money for mulch and spreading it. I mean, two hundred and what?
I believe a hundred and...
I think I figured it up. It was two hundred and some thousand dollars or something?
Last year, we spent just over one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand.
I think it's priced up, I think it's priced up to exceed that amount. What we discovered is we've done our playground research. We have to have an extended area for all of our playgrounds, like swing fall zones eighteen feet beyond the center of the
And depth.
Swing set, and requires twelve inches, eighteen inches of mulch. So we've gotten into a lot of mulch over the last two years. We've actually had to do some excavating of soil to be removed from some of the playground areas to get the depth of mulch required, and so have the apparatus work. So that's where a lot of this mulch is going for playground areas.
You said the mulch had to be a foot deep?
I think in some cases, Mark's not here, but in some cases, it's as much as eighteen inches deep.
It is, for proper depth of, to have a landing zone underneath playground equipment, it's twelve to eighteen inches, depending on the piece, and also extended areas. So a swing set, for instance, takes a significant amount of space, because, of course, depending on the length of the chain that's, you know, causing that swing, you have to have that landing zone so many feet from the apparatus, and then at twelve to eighteen inches deep. So it's a significant amount of mulch. And, of course, mulch degrade, so it has to regularly be inspected, measured, and refilled.
Is this the only dealer that bid on this, or?
I'd have to go back and look. This bid was done before me. I don't remember if there was...
This is renewal, yes, yeah. And he offers a couple of options for us, where he'll just do a delivery, but there's
also an option for a laid price as well. So depending on the workload at any given time, his actual rate to spread the mulch at a zone for us is actually fairly reasonable, considering an hourly rate, we would pay staff to do that same work.
Thank you. Just curious.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to Mr. Bickford's motion for approval of the consent agenda, as presented. All those in favor? Mr. Rabin? Thank you. Seven, zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
That concludes our new business, and that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Okay. How very... Just Dr. Pugh and Paula Moore are here this evening as ex-official members of our committee on diversity to share their final report. The committee's been working very diligently over a long period of time now, and they're prepared to share some recommendations and just the summary of their work. So Dr. Pugh?
Thank you. Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. We're here tonight to share with you the work of the Ad hoc Committee on Diversity and to answer any questions that you might have. You received in your packets the full final report, along with the, a copy of the presentation that we'll make tonight. Our co-chair, Rabbi Ploes, was unable to come tonight. He sensed his regrets, but he did have an important family engagement for his daughter this evening. Our committee members that are here present are representing the members of our group. So thank you for joining me up here for any questions that you might have. As a little background, the Board of Education formed a charge during the October eighteenth, two thousand sixteen business meeting, and pursuant to that charge, this committee provided an interim report to you in June, and tonight, we're pleased to share the final report. The term of the members of this committee does expire with this report. Before you is the initial charge. It can be reviewed here, but the work and research yielded for the group, four basic focus areas that were shared with you in June. And then those four areas turned into four broad recommendations. The committee explored diversity within the school holistically and through its impact and relationship with the entire community. The methodology developed as we began to share our own understandings about the task, as well as the challenges that each of the representatives brought to surface, what our community resources were, and learning about each other. The members of the committee compiled research, and they analyzed trends, including local and national data. And after the interim report, overarching recommendations and aligned supports were identified to include effective practices, a rationale, and the supporting research. So, the final recommendations, they're intentionally broad and focused on those areas that received the most discussion around challenges and potential solutions. The first recommendation is around engaging our community partners to value all cultures and remove the barriers to resources. The second recommendation is about creating a welcoming and safe and inclusive environment through education and intentional inclusive practices that recognize the challenges and barriers of typically underrepresented individuals. Recommendations three is about ensuring systemic equity and access to early, extended, advanced, and a broad range of opportunities. And the fourth and final recommendation focuses on methods to recruit, select, and retain an underrepresented diverse workforce by highlighting the benefits of living in Washington County. The board's charge asks the committee to explore not only recommendations, but also to recommend effective practices. So for each of the four recommendations, there were research-based effective practices that the committee identified. Given the diversity and depth of the existing platform of access, as well as the opportunity for engagement, we believe, the committee believes, that Washington County Public Schools is well-positioned to partner with both the faith and business communities to develop a more diverse culture and inclusive educational goals. Additionally, promoting access to resources that do exist but are often unaccessed, because families are not aware that they do exist. The school system is well-represented throughout the community, on board of directors, as committee members, task forces, and work groups. We believe also that access to housing, transportation system, and cultural opportunities are needed. And the final effective practice includes expanding those partnerships to consider models such as the community schools model in a manner that can be seen currently through the work of the best or community of hope. Under recommendation two, it's founded on the belief that all students and families, especially those of historically underserved populations, deserve a welcoming, accessible, and intentional mechanism with which to share and hear the many supportive voices in our community. Effective practices for this include increasing cultural proficiency, creating a network of supports, and promoting understanding of social and emotional learning, and increased access to mental health and trauma support services. Recommendation two also includes implementing inclusive disciplinary practices and engaging students and families who speak languages other than English. Recommendation three includes effective practices to provide continued professional development for all staff in cultural proficiency in teaching. We also recommend, an effective practice was to create structures within the school processes to ensure equity and access to educational opportunities, to include considering providing transportation to the public school opportunities that are available. These practices can ensure an inclusive culture and climate in the school system. By highlighting the existing strengths and promoting Washington County Public Schools, the county is well-positioned to recruit, retrain, retain, and develop a more diverse workforce. The workforce improvement could be the change for students who are looking for successful individuals who look like themselves. It also allows for the expansion of understanding and empathy in those who are not diverse themselves, as they work beside those who are, and in learning about new cultures and new ideas. Some of the effective practices in the research include promoting the considerable community assets and adopting a culturally proficient interview process. Additional practices to support, recommendation four, include creating structures to promote successes and recognize employees and, for their, for their efforts, and developing diverse work, diverse future educators from within by offering things like tuition assistance. like tuition assistance and maximizing what we have in our existing teaching academy programs. We discussed at length these things and came to the idea that we needed more concrete steps. At this point, we believe that in these, the future consideration for you is that because the work began decades ago and continues today, our committee recommends forming an ongoing advisory committee to continue the work of examining and further defining the numerous potential action steps identified by this ad hoc committee. In this way, the board can be involved in the process of making informed decisions with respect to budgeting and focus areas. There are a number of recommendations that are included in the back that do bear and warrant future discussion and consideration as you move forward. In closing, at this time, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. We have questions. Mrs. Fisher?
Not totally questions, but obviously, these steps would involve getting the entire community involved. It's not something the school system can do on its own, and it also, in many cases or a number of cases, involves money as well, which has to come from somewhere. I did have one question. Can you tell me what a culturally proficient interview sounds like or looks like or?
Yes, we can.
So, a culturally proficient interview would make sure that there is equity within the process so that, for example, right now, in the screening interview process, every candidate, they is asked the same question regardless if you're a kindergarten teacher or a physics teacher, to make sure that everybody coming right out of the gate has an equitable and equal opportunity to the same questions. Also, looking at the types of questions that are asked to make sure that they are culturally responsive and making sure that there isn't bias in the questions or lead-in in the questions, perhaps background knowledge required of a candidate who may, for example, not be able to speak English as their first language, making sure that they're clear, concise, and simple. Those would be a couple of examples that I would consider a culturally proficient interview.
Thank you. Any others?
I'd like to thank the committee for their work, and I want you to know that I read with great interest your lengthy final report and made notes in the margins, and I'd like to read some of my notes. What could that vehicle be? How and when will this be done? How and when? Has thought been given to do this, to doing this here? Is this a priority? And how? So, I want you to know that I am in full support of the establishment of an advisory committee, whether it be with the title diversity or diversity and equity or something along those lines. But I think it's important that we can continue the work. I think your recommendations and future considerations, I've starred many of them. I have, at the top of this, consider and prioritize, so I see that as the work of the advisory committee. In particular, on page 11, I found of interest the last, next to the last paragraph about the regionalized ELL magnet schools and/or newcomer centers that can promote and enhance academic excellence for English language learners by centralizing services. We've had a lot of talk here recently about the increase in our numbers of English language learners and the challenges that they come to us with. And so, I see this as something very exciting. And when I read down to the next paragraph, it speaks to the fact that Frederick County is doing this. So, has anyone thought of paying a visit to Frederick County? Has anyone visited it?
I've already, we've visited Frederick County, and I've worked really closely with the supervisor there, in addition to the supervisor in Charles County, looking at their ELL populations. They're very similar to ours. Frederick has really exploded in the last several years. Maybe about a decade ago, they were where we are right now. And Charles County had always been in pace with us, but in the past two years, they've really substantially increased their students, that they opened up a first regionalized high school, and it grew so quickly that then they just recently opened up a second school. So, that's why I looked to those two counties, because they have actually started having that regionalized center, but it has grown so much that they needed to open up a second center. So, that's where we've been looking at, and their demographics, as I said, are similar to ours.
So, my note, has thought been given to doing this here? Is this a priority? That would be a, it's being considered? It's being thought of?
Yes, it is being considered, and we've even talked to some of our principals about how can we begin a model similar to this so that we can provide services and actually meet their needs by having a full-time teacher there. It's easier to do in the center of our cities because the transportation is easier for our students. So, we've had preliminary discussions with the principals about informally being, serving as this role, but I think one of the things that Paula speaks to is having one place for families who are not from the area, who don't speak English, to come to get the same answer. And I think that that would help us help welcome our new community members. I think a system of enrolling and interpreting documents instead of, right now, they enroll at the homeschool, they go through the homeschool, the homeschool calls us, Paula interprets every single language, and then we send it back to them and say, we think you should give these credits. So, we do think there will be some efficiencies in a process similar. We're not sure if we have a whole school, but we'll continue to explore and provide opportunities, alternatives.
Thank you. Thank you again. You did a fine work.
Part of what we're experiencing, we have a school that only has a few English language learners or only gets a few English language learners every couple of years. Suddenly, they're out of the habit of what the process is. So, that's some of the new challenge we have is for discovering some English language learners new to our area, particularly outline areas.
Any other questions?
I'd just say thank you to our staff who've stayed every night and who've contributed hours to researching and writing, and to thank our community members while they're not here tonight. They were here consistently giving input and providing good, rich discussion for us to understand some of the issues as well as some of the opportunities that we have. I think they are appreciative of being included in the process, and I would just encourage that to continue with whatever type of committee you would form, is community involvement.
Thank you.
Thank you, lady.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Major of my report is just a few announcements. One of the charges I've given Dr. Pugh is to identify some focus, a focus group, have several meetings to look into the exploration of how we might expand, you know, particularly areas around engineering, computer science, robotics, artificial intelligence, as well as maybe some of the health fields. So, as we have new opportunities coming up, some long-range planning, maybe programs that we begin in the fall of 19. We have a few expansions of computer science in the fall of 18, but we're looking on to 19. We might have some physical plant work to do, maybe some modernizations of some, you know, small renovations through some classrooms or some lab-type areas, and then some curriculum and some people to hire. So, we're looking out a year and a half, two years out, kind of our next level of where we want to try to advance programs, potentially in a CTE area or potentially could just be an advanced program-type areas. The board, and I know, Mrs. Williams, you might announce this later, but we anticipate a budget workshop on the 19th starting at 2:30. Staff, I just want to thank senior staff and many of our central office staff, and particularly David Brannenberg, Eric Sisler, for hours and hours of work, their last six workdays, and they work on Saturday as well, to start pulling together our budget, very complicated document as we've gone through every line of the budget, and we look forward to sharing some of that information and recommendations with the board on the 19th. Tomorrow will be the first part of the president's search for HCC. I've been asked to serve on that committee, so four or five hours tomorrow will be dedicated to that effort. HCC is a very important partner to Washington County Public Schools. We work closely with them. We have a lot of students that attend HCC part-time, even as high school students receive credit from HCC, and obviously, a lot of our students attend there. So, the selection of new president will be very important to Washington County Public Schools. We certainly want to wish Dr. Altieri well in retirement. He's been a real advocate here in Washington County, and we're grateful for his service to Washington County. Our professional development efforts, I just want to say a big thank you to our teachers. They continue to attend at record rates our professional development opportunities. I've had the opportunity last night to participate in the fourth and fifth grade, kind of next level components of reading, follow-up to our summer workshops, our second follow-up to our summer workshop. They had second and third grade tonight. They're having first and second grade next week, or kindergarten and first grade next week. We've had math workshops, English workshops, science workshops, participation in a lot of our encore areas. So, I just want to thank our staff for giving up their time after school, especially during the holiday season, for continuing their professional work. And just in case we don't have another business meeting, I do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays for the upcoming, seems like a little ways away, but it'll be here before we do. Appreciate, again, all the staff's effort and our community and our students. Just want to wish them the best in the season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. That brings us to personnel action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, board members, President, Vice President, and Superintendent Michael. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No, President. We've to accept personnel actions.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. All those in favor approving personnel actions as presented? Thank you, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. And that brings us to reports to the board, and we have our board member committee reports. Would you like to begin down there, Mr. Diallo?
Our meeting, that's last week on Tuesday, and we don't anticipate another meeting until January.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes, the curriculum instruction committee did not meet last week as planned because of me being ill, and our next meeting will be January 23rd.
Finance committee has scheduled a meeting to, prior to our January 16th board meeting, so we'll actually be meeting at 2:00 PM rather than the usual 8:00 AM.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kessler?
Thank you. Facilities committee will be meeting on January 2nd at 8:00 AM.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy committee met on November 29th. Based on changes to the Annotated Code of Maryland, the committee has been reviewing policy BBFE, which is entitled Ethics. We will continue our work on that policy on December 12th, hoping to finalize those changes before committees change.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Okay, under miscellaneous, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Very sorry. HR, Mr. Ridenhour?
We will be meeting, the next meeting, the HR committee is January 23rd, 2018.
Thank you. That brings us to miscellaneous business and the consideration of future agenda items, the future agenda item list. I believe you have that in your packet of information. Dr. Michael mentioned the work session for the budget that's coming up on December 19th. Before that, on Friday of this week, we have a MAB training on the Open Meetings Act. And then, in January, we will be having several updates, one on the Education Foundation and one on reading workshop. And we're also going to be recognizing the work of the Hickers Town Lioness Club in If you have agenda items that you would like to see put on the list for future agendas, please let me know or Dr. Michael or Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Ridenhour, I've noted your agenda item. Take that as a request this evening, future agenda.
On track.
On track. Discussion of on track. Is there anything else that you'd like me to note at this time, colleagues, for future agenda items? All right, and that brings us to board member comments. Mr. Ridenhour?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I know that I often send a lot of questions to our superintendent in reference to our consent agenda each month, and I know I probably am considered a pain, but in retrospect, sometimes it works out. And I did question the truck last time, and it did save us $6,000. I know it wasn't $600,000 or $6 million, but every little bit helps.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes, I was privileged to go up to Marshall Street School this past week and visit staff and Principal Amy Norris, and I have to say that it was an eye-opening experience, a very positive experience. I encourage my colleagues to go visit with Ms. Amy. She did a wonderful tour, and I got to meet a lot of great teachers, and the hard work that they do is so rewarding to them. I mean, they are just really thankful for their opportunity to educate that clients, and they just were so appreciative to what the school system was able to provide to them, and it was really a very positive experience up there, the teachers, the atmosphere. Amy is just a fabulous principal. I look forward to meeting more staff members and principals in the coming times, and it was just a very great opportunity, so good.
Stauffer? Nothing? Mr. Bickford? Mrs. Murray? Mr. Diallo? Nothing.
I would just like to thank my colleagues for the long day of meetings, the very good meetings. We had the opportunity to meet this morning with our delegation and had a very good discussion about the board's legislative program for this year. And again, it's been a long day, but a productive day, so I thank you, and we stand adjourned.